Action items that include consideration of possible action on application for our live entertainment license for Alice Reika, Alice's Fitness and Dance located at 179 Main Street in Sturbridge, then consideration of possible action on a one-day liquor license, application for Alice's, Alice Ranka, Alice's Fitness and Dance for karaoke nights and burlesque dance shows at 179 Main Street for fair estates in 2025, and then consideration of possible action on the appeal for water and sewer connection fees for the property located at 698 Main Street, Sturbridge by Jeremy Procon, Interstate Towing, and then consideration of possible action, authorize the chair to sign the notice of award to contract for the sewer rehabilitation project with Insta-Form Technologies LLC in the amount of $389,426,000. And then consideration of possible action, authorize the chair to sign the updated regional shared services agreement with Charlton, and then consideration of possible action to authorize the town administrator to enter into a contract for electrical upgrades on the town common, and then consideration of possible action on increasing the building department's annual inspection fee from $40 to $200, then consideration of possible action on the approval of ARP expenditures for remaining funds, and consideration of possible action on accepting the donation of 34 Thanksgiving meals from Steve Small, proprietor of Old Village Grill, and consideration of possible action on accepting the donation of eight turkeys, eight Shaw's gift cards, and in the amount of $30 each, one master $25 Mastercard gift card, and four McNucks Big Bunny gift cards in the amount of $30 each from Don Taff on behalf of the Quay Bog Quantex Gossit Lake Association, and then consideration and possible action in signing the following licenses, which would be for Soup to Nuts, Sturbridge Antique Shops, Sturbridge Country Inn, The Scottish Inn, DNR Garage, Sturbridge Service Center Incorporated, Sturbridge Automotive Collision Center, Sturbridge Motors Incorporated, Napoli Pizza III, and The Scottish Inn, and then consideration of possible action on signing 2025 license renewals for the following businesses Highland Orchard DBA, Highland Orchard and Brewery, Cracker Barrel, Old Country Store Incorporated DBA, Cracker Barrel, Churchill's Village Eatery, Hampton Inn 413 Main, Village Pizza Restaurant, Uno's Restaurants LLC DBA, Uno Chicago Grill, Sada's Coffee Incorporated, Ocean State Job Lot, Baba Sushi Sturbridge, Altruist Brewing Company LLC, Comfort Inn and Sweets American, The American Legion, Teddy's, Teddy G's Pub and Grill Incorporated, Brush It Off LLC, Kaluva Restaurant, Sturbridge RV Resort, Charles River Services Incorporated, Sturbridge Auto Sales LLC, Apple Green New England Incorporated, Dunkin' Donuts, Burger King, McDonald's, Bull Sturbridge Pizza, Wicked Licks, Pine Lake RV Resort and Cottages, Super 8 Motel, and Carriage House Inn and Econo Lodge. Then old business, new business, correspondence approval minutes, Citizens Forum Executive Session, and then adjourn. With that, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then just a, please just take a moment of silence to think about the victims in the shooting in Madison, Wisconsin, and the poor student teacher who passed. All right, so then we are on to public service announcements. Mary Lou, anything?
Yes, this Saturday is the Santa ride. Santa sleigh will be, sleigh, excuse me, will be taking off from the fire department at nine o'clock, and we'll be traveling through town. You can find the routes, it's listed on the fire department's Facebook page and on Mass Community, Sturbridge Mass Community page.
Great. Chase?
I would just like to wish all of our residents a happy holidays and a Merry Christmas. I hope everybody has a safe holiday season.
Well, me too.
Well, yours was a Santa sleigh announcement, so it don't count, but close enough. Mary?
Say Merry Christmas, God's blessings, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Healthy New Year. And number two announcement, for anybody coming into the town hall, our staff has done an outstanding job decorating their office doors. So I do encourage you to bring your children in, and I'm looking at two right now, and they're lovely. One is a reindeer stable, and another one is like a gorgeous Christmas tree. And I just want to say our town hall is decorated beautifully, and to thank Robin and everybody who's done it, Michelle, and our Christmas tree, a lot of hard work went into it, and I thank them.
And I want to encourage the public, we love to have people come in, we love to have people bring their children in.
Great. All right, Mary?
Know the same, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Healthy New Year, and hope everyone enjoys.
Yeah, and I'll just end on that note as well, along with Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year, just reminded everybody to have a safe New Year, our public safety folks work hard enough, and everybody just take care of themselves and each other. So with that, Sue, I think you are up.
Hi, thank you so much for giving your time, your schedule. I apologize that I wasn't here earlier in the year, which I usually am, to say thank you, we had a very successful 2024. I used to commute for work, and now I travel for work, so I'm not around as much as I used to be. And I'm also here to answer any questions you have about our upcoming move in 2026. We will be here in 2025. As an organization, we wanted to be sure that we announced it to our riders, that what was going on rather than waiting, because we wanted them to be able to come and say goodbye to Sturbridge and give it the fitting goodbye that it deserves. Somebody in the office said the other day that it's very bittersweet, and that's true, and it's very exciting at the same time. So I've read so many things on social media that I have to say have surprised me, because I have been involved with the PanMass, as many of you know, since, I want to say 84 or 85. I sit on the Board of Directors, I'm the Sturbridge co-coordinator with Dr. Matt McGinnis, who's originally a Sturbridge native, and I am also the lodging manager for all of the PanMass. So it's always interesting to see what social media has to say about how decisions were made and why they were made, but I came to answer your questions directly.
Does anybody have any questions regarding?
No, it was pretty clear explanation.
Sorry?
It was a pretty clear explanation in the paper and also on the broadcast.
The, when you refer to the paper, I have to ask which one?
The Telegram.
The Telegram did cover some of the points on why we're leaving Sturbridge. It's, but there are many, many reasons, and I've seen a lot that, you know, it's all the host, or it's this, or it's that.
Maybe Sue, are you willing to share what are the, I mean, I'm getting to send, you don't find it all to be accurate, I'm not on social media, so I don't know what's out there.
Hold on one second. So first of all, let's just note for people at home who might not be realizing that the PanMass Challenge will be starting somewhere else, because I know.
Our starting line in 2026, we will be here in 2025. I have my years correctly.
Well, there you go. No big deal.
So, as we all did, we experienced a setback in ridership from the pandemic. Sturbridge Start has never recouped from that, and then this year we actually went down from our numbers pre-Pandemic. So every year, we, Mary, you know, you volunteer, you get a survey, we survey every volunteer, and we survey every rider. And there were a number of things that have been nagging in Sturbridge that have just come to the forefront, and when our ridership goes down, our donations go down. So that forced us to look for another location. Traffic on the Turnpike on Friday afternoon was probably, which none of us can control. If I'm sure if any of us could, we would do it like that. As you know, most of our riders come from the Boston area, it takes them almost three hours to get here. So that's when they're already leaving work early, so they've transferred to the Wellesley Start. So our Wellesley hub, it used to be this many riders in Sturbridge, this many riders in Wellesley, it was created as a release valve, really, for Sturbridge. It's now this way. And the Wellesley facility, Wellesley Start isn't equipped to handle the entire PanMass, nor is Sturbridge, nor is Worcester. It's not, we just thank God we have too many riders and too much infrastructure to carry that. So traffic, the route itself, our average rider overall is 47 years old. The Sturbridge average rider is in their 50s. We have, by moving to Worcester, we cut almost 10 miles off the route, which doesn't sound like much, does it? But after you go 100 miles, you don't want to go the other 10. That last water stop that we have is the longest, is the slowest pace naturally. So that cut the need for that, and we also cut 1,000 feet of vertical climbing. So as beautiful as the Charlton, Dudley, and Sutton Hills are, they're very, very challenging. So the first 27 miles, rather than being an Olympic-level event, I mean, it's, don't get me wrong, it's a century, and it's, there are hills, but it's, it's made it a more reasonable ride, especially when most of our riders who come from a central mass start go on to do the two-day ride, so they ride both Saturday and Sunday. Hotel pricing and condition of hotels was certainly mentioned throughout. One positive, however, throughout, and I can say that without equivocation, is the cooperation that we have received from the town and the public safety departments here in Sturbridge. I've come every year and told you, it's unmatched, it's unmatched. And we're hopeful, and very hopeful, because they have, their mission statement is very similar to ours, that Holy Cross will match the enthusiasm and the generosity and the just, you know, good, hard work that we have experienced here in Sturbridge. So those are the reasons we're leaving. Somebody today was like, Billy Starr is going to buy a new house. Well, he's not. As you know, at Sturbridge, nobody paid Billy Starr to come to Sturbridge, nor is anybody paying Billy Starr to go to Worcester, so.
So I think it's just, I'd like to say, listen, these decisions get made, you're running an organization, we appreciate the mission of the organization, this isn't about anyone coming in particular, this is a fundraiser, make sure the people who are ill are not long.
I mean, I personally am very sad. I mean, I live right over the town line in Brookfield, you know, I start my setup of the PanMass on the Sunday before, I ride my bike down seven miles and home seven miles that night, now I have to get my, now I have to get my car and commute. The other thing, bringing up the Pike, was for our Eastern Mass and other riders, they could come into Worcester from so many different, you know, Sturbridge is almost, it's like you got to come in 20, or they come in 20, or the Pike, and it's just, you know, they're really sitting in traffic for a long time. So those are, the facilities at Holy Cross are beautiful, but we are really looking forward to our final ride from Sturbridge. As I say, nothing is forever, and never say never and forever is a long, long time. I guarantee you that there will be riders leaving from here on their own, we're not supporting them. So please, I hope nobody starts that rumor, but there will be riders who will do the original route, because it is the original route of the PanMass Challenge and Sturbridge, and at the time, I think we were Sheridan.
How many years have you been in Sturbridge?
In the town of Sturbridge, 44, the first ride left from the Eastville Mall.
So I just feel like, I understand what our chair said, I also think it's a big loss to the town of Sturbridge after 40, almost, many, many decades, and it's a sad event that we're going to lose out. Now, you've mentioned a few times that Holy Cross facilities are beautiful, where are they, have they committed to, I guess I don't know enough about where you're going.
They've committed their entire campus and student body to us. As I said, their mission ties in naturally very, very much with ours.
Now, we're not in control of this, but I'm going to ask anyway, when you said you surveyed and you said, you know, the hotels, did participants find our hotels to be too expensive?
Very.
So that's, you know, something to heed, you know, even with our, our economic development coordinator, because we don't have control over what businesses charge, but there are consequences when hotels increase their prices for certain events, and then they go back down to a more competitive rate, that there are consequences, and unfortunately, I know it wasn't, it was only one concern, but unfortunately, the consequence is that that was a contributing factor, it sounds like, to the decision. It wasn't the only one, and I get that racers are getting older, and 10 miles less is, you know, as a runner, I get it.
The route, honestly, probably, you know, but going back to the hotels, I, I'm the lodging person for the PanMass, I coordinate all of the PanMass contracts, and I worked in the hotel industry, that's why I do it, and they, it's, I don't want to look at the hotels and go, oh, you're so bad because you charge so much, because the hotel business is, you know, real estate is location, 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 hotel business is date for rate. So I can go and get a hotel room anywhere in Sturbridge right now for a lot less than I can on the Friday night of the PanMass Challenge. And one of the hotel owners said to me, just point blank, he said, they don't have to pay it. And he's absolutely right. And what happened was, we have to make sure that we maintain the quality and the safety of our ride throughout the entire event. So if we let sentiment and emotion, and there is a lot for us to stay in Sturbridge, Billy is very similar, is very much a traditionalist, you know, he wants to maintain the traditions of the PanMass Challenge, but we have to look at the overall health of the event. And if we let Wellesley become overrun with riders, and we were running our, our main hub with less than, you know, less than 2,000 riders, it just wouldn't, it wouldn't be feasible.
No, we appreciate that, but at this point, we just, we thank you for the effort, we will continue to work with you guys strongly next year, and we'll keep working on these problems.
As I said, it's not, it's not goodbye.
Yep.
It's, I just wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to ask any questions. If anybody asks you any questions, my, Robin has my contact, Mary has it, or if you want to have a deeper discussion, I'd be happy to facilitate that. But again, thank you all for everything you did, we had a wonderful year, the weather was, well, after we left here, the weather was glorious. So people always like it when the weather's bad in Sturbridge, because then they say, oh, it's going to be great for the time that they're actually on the bike. So thank you all again, and happy holidays to you all.
Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
All right, with that, we're moving to department reports. Water and Sewer, Shane.
You have the operating reports for October and November. Start with any questions on those you might have.
Any questions from the board?
Nope. Always up and down.
Especially with this dry weather.
Yeah, it was really dry.
Yeah, I guess that's the first question for me, for the folks at home, what, so how did we fare our wells there through the drying?
A little. Honestly, since we added the fourth well, I've seen the other three a lot lower, even, you know, when it was as dry as it was, we still had plenty of water, plus our usage is down from over the past few years, water-saving devices, rate increases, things of that nature, so we have plenty of water.
All right. So any other questions on the reports, or Shane? All right, Shane? Oh, it's, I'm sorry. Did you have some?
Well, not on that month, I just have a question I'll ask at the end when you're done.
Okay, so I wanted to give you an update on lead and copper, as you were asked for it the last time. Out of the 1,100 of unknowns, we've identified 83 through going out and doing inspections and people actually filling out the online survey. Altogether, we've identified 453, a lot of those were businesses that we were able to get into before we even had to send a letter out. So we still have some appointments, calls are tailing off as we expected, some people have called and just asked information about it and requested to call back later and make appointments in the future. So that's where we stand on the lead and copper stuff.
83, you said, total? That have lead? Oh, that don't?
No, no, we have not seen any lead.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you said.
I'm sorry, these are inspections that have been completed, and to date, we have seen no lead.
Okay, awesome, okay, good, thank you.
All right. I wanted to give you an update on PFOS. So we're more focused now on the wastewater system than we are the drinking water system for the simple fact, we've seen a couple small hits in the water system, but they're already retested, non-detects. The wastewater system's different. We've had hits at the plant itself, and we've seen hits coming in from the leachate, coming from the landfill. We've also been on the system testing some of our larger users sewer-wise, and they're coming back and non-detect. So when the PFOS limits go into effect, the first thing they're going to ask us to do is not put treatment at the plant, they're going to want to know what's coming from. So Heather and I reviewed everything, and what we're going to do is, in January 1st to April 1st, there'll be no septic and no leachate at the plant. We basically want to purge the plant out of everything except for what's coming in out of the system. Then, because the sludge age is about 50 days, right, so that sludge age is how long everything comes into the plant, it takes to actually get it out of the plant. By suspending it for three months, we know we'll purge the plant, then we'll sample in April, and everything comes back and non-detect, that's just another data point. So I just wanted to give you that update on where we are. I still have about four businesses left to do, I believe. I actually petitioned the DEP not to sample them, because their flow is not even 300 gallons a day, but the DEP wants them sampled, so we're going to do that and collect those data points. So I just want to keep you up to date on the PFOS, because it's everywhere, right? We see it in the news, see it on social media, I see it at Beolia, updates all the time. So I just want to let you know where we stand and what our plan is moving forward.
And so basically, if I understand it, you're, you're going to purge the sludge to create a control, so you can figure out, I best identify where things are coming from.
So basically, you purge it out, right? Now, the only thing coming into the plant is stuff from the collection system itself, there's no leachate, there's no septic, that gets that out of the way.
Got you.
And then when we do the test in April, if the plant comes in that, non-detect, 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 because you have to run three sets of samples, well, then we can start focusing on leachate and septic, especially if the remaining industries come back non-detect, which, who knows, right? But that flow, I can't see it being a major contributor either, okay? So there's the update on PFOS. I also wanted to give you an update on E1 pumps, as, you know, we continue to put new E1 pumps in. So what I did was I took a three-year average from when we started putting them in, we averaged about 57 pumps a year in the last three years, which equates to about $153,000. So when it continued moving on with that program, what we are seeing is, when we go and pull pumps, and we take them out to repair them, is almost as much, if not more, than to buy new ones. So Heather and I have cut up for the cutoff, if it's over $2,000, then we just buy a new pump, because a new pump is $2,700. If it's a lot less, and it's not an old pump, like 15 years old, then we will have it rebuilt, okay? So I just want to know, let you know what we're doing with that program. And honestly, it seems like the calls are coming down, right? Now you don't have rebuilds out there, you got brand-new pumps, because when you rebuild a pump, you can rebuild everything that's wrong with it, and something that wasn't wrong with it, in two months from now, now that's got a problem, right? So the calls are coming down, and I just wanted to give you that update too, so you are aware of that also, okay? Because you're going to see it when you look at the water and sewer budget, what we're budgeting for E1 stuff, okay? I was going to talk about the, you know, the drill, we did go into a water ban, state asked us to, we didn't have to, by our permit, we did it anyways. When it started snowing, we came back out of the water ban, there is a little bit more water up there, I'm seeing higher well levels, also seeing more flow at the sewer plant. So we're slowly starting to come out of it, but we have a long ways to go, okay? And that's really all I had for you this evening.
All right, and no questions, anything from the board?
No.
All right, I think that's, it's a lot, it makes sense, thanks for all your hard work, boss.
Are you letting, I'm sorry, I guess I do have a question. Are you letting, and I asked, and I asked this last week too, but I'm just going to ask you too, as you check people's water, what do you call it, the water entry for the lead?
Oh, you mean to make sure it's not a lead line coming in?
A lead line, that's what I could think of that way.
Yeah, we'll tell them while we operate, while they, I say, yeah, it's copper.
Oh, so they're letting them know?
Yes.
Okay.
Because they have to let us in there right there while we're taking the picture and doing the documentation.
Okay, so they're not left hanging?
No.
Okay, awesome.
Anything else? All right, Mary Lou, thank you.
Happy holidays.
All right, DPW, Heather, you are up.
Good evening, happy holidays. So you only have one month for me, because last time we actually did Novembers, because we were, or October, sorry, because we were here then to have Novembers, I didn't rush halfway through January, December to do this one, so. Basically, it started snowing for us, so life is wonderful, right? Like, I actually said to Shane, I was offended by all the snowmen, because, not really, I'm just joking, it's just.
We like the snowing. That keeps everybody happily employed, too.
Let's stay on top of gang cars. We're going to get through tonight, let's keep it a little tighter than we've been, huh? All right, Heather, go ahead.
Yep, I don't have too much going on, other than that, you know, we're dealing with snow, we're into our winter mode. I'm pretty much happy that we are actually starting to ferret things out. I will say, though, for everyone, anybody who's listening that still might be interested, we are still taking applications for plow drivers, both hired to drive our trucks and hired, if you have a truck and you want to, you know, us to hire you to drive your truck. We are still short drivers, so it is really important that I do say that on both sides. The last storm was a real trying all of us and all of our staff, because not only did we only expect to get three inches, and we got eight, we also got very high winds and had multiple trees down. I actually had two of our regular employees who would have been plowing, should have been plowing, out clearing trees for five hours that day, just so that we could get around with the plow trucks.
And I would like to piggyback with a public apology, 501 went off my radar, there were some complaints about it not being plowed. I did respond on social media, I did put a post just on in that, that it just, it went off our radar, and so I apologize for that.
Okay, good, thank you. Keep going, Heather.
Other things that are happening in the DPW, I don't even know where I am. So we're doing a lot of permanent, a lot of contracts right now, as you will see, I have contracts that were on last week meeting, and again, coming on this week, this meeting, we have another contract coming up, which is great. So we're starting to do more and more of our engineering work that's starting. I will also have, hopefully, in the new year, have a contract coming in for the design of the removal of the underground storage tanks for the gas. So that's kind of really what I'm working on right now, mirrored in with all of the stuff for what happens with snow and ice and my foggy brain some days. So I have, anybody have any questions regarding our memo, happy to answer anything.
Any questions from the board?
None on the memo, but is there going to be ice skating?
So that decision wasn't mine, that decision was made by REC, the REC decides whether ice skating goes out or not, and my understanding was after last year's, basically the last two years' failure to be able to generate ice and the unpredictability of the temperatures, they decided not to continue the ice skating program. So as far as I know, we have not been asked, well, I have not been asked to put out any of the snow, ice skating rink. And you can kind of see it, I mean, it's been 50, cold, and then warm, then cold, and then warm, and again, we're going to go right through that cycle, what, we were very, very cold over the weekend, and it's going to be 50 tomorrow. And that was the same where last, we were cold, and we're going to be cold again this weekend, but we're not getting that good cycle of just nice cold.
25 degrees every night.
Exactly, if it was 25 degrees for a week, we would be fine. If it was 25 degrees for a week, we would be fine. We're just not getting that. We're getting very cyclical cycles, which is what happened to us last year, honestly, and the year before. We just never got to a point where the ice was even skateable, right? It would almost get there, and then it would melt. And it would almost get there, and it would melt. And I think that the decision was made that it was just too much of an effort.
Right.
Without enough reward, you know? Sometimes you have to have a little bit of fun.
I figured with the weather, but.
Yeah, and I think that was the decision.
People ask.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, understandable. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Anything else?
I have a question, because I've had people asking me, when there's a snowstorm, when it comes to plowing the roads, I understand that the main roads need to get plowed first, but when it comes to the side roads, are there any, is there any rhyme or reason as to which roads get plowed?
So I just told you what happened to us last storm.
Right.
When we have two drivers, that means there's two hold routes, and I just told you we are short. We have routes, there are no drivers, and even as it writes, plow. So that means we go do a route, and we move on to the next route. And whoever gets done, when they're done their route, they move on to the next route.
Okay.
This area is not done. And that is how it's going to be until I get more drivers. And I know there's been people, there were some comments, well, why don't you just hire more people? I'm happy to hire.
We would love to.
That's, that's not a problem.
Please call. If you can drive a truck, call.
I would love to hire more people or have people come and plow for us. I'm always, you know, if someone says something to me that, like, they're semi-retired, I'm like, would you like to plow? And they kind of look at me like, get up in the middle of the night? What, you're crazy? And I'm like, yes, I'm crazy, because I do it all the time. So, yeah, it's a shortage of people that want to do it for what we can pay them. I mean, I think we're going to have to talk about some other ways to do it. But I also, you know, in talking to some of our vendors that didn't come back, you know, it's just not cost-effective for them anymore. We don't get as many snowstorms. So even, you know, we had a pretty good-sized snowstorm the other night. They probably got, most of them got like eight hours, which is great, but it's still only 800 bucks. If their insurance is $1,500 just to get the snow plowing insurance, they're barely breaking even, never mind talking about the wear and tear on their trucks, the wear and tear on their own bodies, all of that.
We may need to consider a base retainer, and then they work that off. It's not an automatic payment, but you're going to get 1,500, whether we use it or not, and then anything over that you'll get paid more for. We may have to, I'm not saying we are, but it is something that we're going to have to push the pencil around.
We've talked about maybe thinking about, but still we have to find people that.
Some type of a stipend upfront, but you still have to find the people. But to cover at least what the base insurance would be on something like that. If you're not going to cover their insurance, they're not going to do it.
No.
And do we have it all advertised? Look, there you look at the drivers. It's been.
It's been on the town website. It's, you know, we've talked about putting our signboard potentially back out again, but honestly, most people, if they wanted to do it, are, have already contacted.
DOT has signs, Massachusetts and Connecticut have signs posted for drivers even on the highways.
We're not the only one. Springfield, Worcester, Boston, all the other communities are in the same boat. It's just a lot of the local people that we do know around here are working for DOT, and there's a reason. Because, first of all, they might not pay that much more hourly than we do, but they call them in a lot quicker. They are sitting there waiting for it to snow. We don't have that mentality, and I don't think that we want to have that mentality. There's a lot of waste that they're just, and I get it, for DOT's purposes, they want them out there two seconds after it starts snowing, right? So they have a, you know, keep it wet and black attitude. We can't afford to do that, I'll be quite honest. It would end up blowing our snow budget very quickly. So I encourage people to be patient, you know? Yes, there's going to be snow on the road a little bit longer.
Well, the bluntness of it is, it's not an encouragement to be patient, is if we don't have the staff, they have to be patient, and there's no way around it. So don't overreact to people getting upset on Facebook, because people get, it's, we cannot control it. You can't worry about it. So we appreciate it, Heather. Do you have something?
I have a question, because, so they, so you're looking for drivers to use their own trucks, or the towns?
Correct.
So if they use the towns, are we paying their insurance?
So if they use the town.
The truck isn't insured through the town?
Correct. They basically are insured through the town. They become a temporary town employee.
So I would think that that would be more desirable for a semi-retired.
So you don't get paid as much. It's $23.98 an hour.
Versus the $100.
Right. Because they're on truck.
Okay. And do we find that the $23 is competitive? Are we competitive with other surrounding towns? Because, I mean, I know what Jamie's saying, but at the same time, we do want to get the snow off of the roads.
But, Mary, but that's the problem, and I hear that we do need to price it, but I'm going to push back very specifically on that, because we are, first of all, we are competing with the Commonwealth, whose purse is far deeper and pays far more than we can pay.
I get it.
And it is a regional problem that's having everywhere. So yes, we should be paying what we can pay. We should be being aggressive about it, but by the same token, I don't think it's fair to, and I'm not suggesting you're doing this, Mary, but I'm more of talking about people online. It's not that these things happen, we make a mistake, sure, like 501 Maine, we should have done that, that's fine. But if we don't have bodies, we don't have bodies. And it's just, it is, and it is a productive discussion. We expect you, Heather, to have, to ask the very question that Mary's asking, but we understand you're not going to solve it, and probably before the next snowstorm. So please, drive it and figure out solutions to this, and maybe the next time we talk, we can have a better sketch of a plan on this.
Of course, part of the problem too with, besides lack of drivers, is the lack of patience on the part of people.
Yeah, it's just tough. It's not.
I mean, they're out the door at seven, they expect.
And they're right, because nobody likes to eat it on the way out the thing, but it's, we can only do what we can do.
I don't disagree with anything that was said. I simply asked, are we competitive? Because I'm not trying to be competitive with the DOT.
I know.
I'm just saying, you know, is Southbridge, Charlton, are the other, and I don't know the answer. Are the other towns paying more? Because we always have to ask if we're competitive. Would we hire people? When, if, or is it simply a shortage because people don't want to do it? That's all.
I think it's, I do think we're competitive, and I can tell you in Southbridge and here, the rate is set up the same way. We pay what the minimum rate for a union employee is. So basically, the lowest rate of, at our starting step. That way, we can't get a grievance for any of our union employees, too, that we're paying somebody coming from the outside that's a temporary employee more than them. So we're, that's kind of how that rate was determined. And so it goes up every year with the union contract, so we're kind of keeping up with whatever the union's getting paid. And Southbridge is the same way. I believe our starting rates are very similar. I can't, I haven't looked, but I know they're very close.
Well, we just raised our bottom step.
Yeah. So I think, I think we're very close in that.
So it is competitive relative to municipalities that are surrounding. Do you go beyond that? Perhaps not. It depends on where we sort of draw the line, I assume.
And without a labor issue.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, there's different, there's different communities doing different things. There are some communities out closer to Boston that are requiring all employees to have some type of role in snow and ice control.
Yeah. Look on the shelf.
So.
All right.
It's an interesting way of looking at it. They're saying, right off the bat, whether you're coming in and helping in the office to answer phone calls, or, you know, answering complaints, which, these are bigger communities, but they're also tapping into other departments where we haven't really been able to do that.
Yeah. We appreciate it. So, all right, so, anything, yeah, anything else? That's what I was going to, anything else for Heather?
No.
All right. Heather, are you, are you on for D?
I do have a couple of those things.
Yeah, let's just get, I don't think they're big pushes, right? I don't know.
Right. One is the water abatement, which I don't.
Okay. So that's C and D. Yeah, that's probably, these are probably, that part is probably going to be a little larger.
C, yeah.
Yeah, all right. Well, let's just go with Terry, and then we'll, we'll do, sorry.
That's fine.
So get your hopes up.
We like to keep you up.
Terry, you're up, sir. Economic development presentation. Michelle, are you ready for this?
I'm ready.
How you doing?
Terry.
Presentation. There's a number of chapters. Overview and define our one-stop policy for business assistance. Take a review at consumer spending to date, meals and hotel revenue. We did a business survey, which is still collecting results, and I have some feedback to provide on that. Also, updates on meal and hotel spending to show how they've been flowing in the last two years, which has been very interesting. Inventory of retail and tourism-related businesses, which I think is very positive for the town. Attendance and visitorship, business of the year award, and then completed and emerging projects and then marketing Sturbridge in our digital age. Quick overview is that hotel and meals revenues are continuing to be consistent and have grown strongly since COVID. 2019 was a high-water mark year for everyone in terms of consumer spending, and then we had the precipitous decline in 2020, and then we saw recovery in 2021 and 2022 and 23. The business service, the business survey results show positive outlooks for the present and the future. Sturbridge's retail base is diverse and well-occupied. It's low vacancy in the past several years, and there's always people seeking space. 2025 will have good news with the emergence of a new theater. And OSV has announced that, given the 250th anniversary of our founding, that they're shooting for an annual attendance of 300,000 versus their normal 200,000 a year. Meals and hotel spending remain strong, but may be plateauing, and I'll get into that. Robin had suggested that we use some ARPA money for a sign grant program, and we now have seven businesses that have accessed that. It took a little while for some of them to get into the paddock.
Get to put a deadline in.
Yeah. But to have seven, I think, is really great, and I think it's enough to say that with STA having its annual funding, that we may create sort of a model sign program going forward to help any business that opens up in the town as a way of welcoming them here and helping them establish a presence. And the Chamber's Visitor Center has been welcoming, I asked for an attendance estimate, and they said they're doing very well and dealing with hundreds of people a year, so that's all positive, too. The one-stop business assistance is, the goal is to work with businesses to obtain assistance, resolve issues together, give a business a sense that they can come to me first, and my job is not to point a finger and say, go to the next teller window, but my job is to make sure that they get the answers that they need and their problems are resolved. So I walk along with them through whatever that process might be. We also do a one-stop letter, and we're continually thinking of ways to increase, to strengthen those letters, particularly with the thought of the sign grant program being another plaudit to put into the letter. Business survey results, there were a lot, I asked a lot of questions, and these were some of the key ones, and there'll be more, because it's taking a while to collect the results, but there's some good flavor here to talk about, which I think is positive. How was 2024 for your business? Three said it was great. Seven said it was good. Four said break even. No one said they fell into a deficit. How have you fared since COVID-19? Six have said better. Seven said they're back to pre-COVID levels. Zero said struggling, but one said behind. Was 2024 better or worse than 2023? Five said that this year was better. Six said it was the same. Three said that 2023 was better. An outlook for the coming year, will 25 be bearish or bullish?
I think it's just.
No, there's a problem with my computer on John. I suppose that's it.
Okay. Well, we're just going to have to go off the thing for now, so just go, we have paper. Just try to.
We can publish those on the.
Yeah, so just go a little higher level with it, Terry, so it'll get a little confusing.
No, no. Okay. Will 2025 be bearish or bullish? Seven were positive. Seven were cautiously optimistic. None of them were bullish, but none of them were bearish. So I think you had 14 saying positive and optimistic is good. I've asked a lot of questions in the survey, but the summary is, where are all the people coming from that come to the town? Is it local? Is it regional? Is it the state? You know, the state's tourism funding is based on attracting people from 50 miles away. Do people really come from 50 miles away? And if so, what percentage is? So the question that I got was, would you agree or disagree that the town's customer base is a, as Mike Harrington at Public House says, it's a lot of everybody coming from different, different locations, different distances? And the answer is pretty overwhelming. Eleven said yes, and three said more local. So I think that that's an interesting response. There are a lot of economic things that go on in the town. Particularly, under the radar is weddings. Weddings, I think, are anywhere from 300 to 500 a year. Public House can have anywhere from 3 to 7 on a weekend, and that's in bringing in what in the hotel industry is called long-term stays. So it's bringing in people who are going to stay here. And it's flowers, it's clothing, it's drinking, it's food, it's beverage, it's music. I mean, there's a whole series of subcontractors in that kind of an industry that's positive for the town. So our wedding's a driver. Five said yes, very strongly. Three said a fair amount. Six said hard to measure. But remember that the people that are answering the survey, and I sent it to 75 businesses, some of them may not be in that wedding orbit, so don't take that as a negative. Is Old Sturbridge Village a driver of economics activity? Three said strongly. Four said modest, and four said hard to measure. So eight said modest to hard to measure, and three said strong. Are recreational vehicles parts that we have a generator? Two said yes. Six said not so much. Two said yes, six said not so much, two said none, and four said hard to measure. So you have a pretty absolute answer if you add up not many, none, and hard to measure. So I think it's something that continues to deserve research, because if you look at the 450 RV pads we have, and if you multiply it by 50% occupancy over six months, which is a pretty conservative measure, it's 90,000 people. So it's a hell of a lot of people coming into the town, and is it that they just stay there and have a nice time, and then it's onto the Cape, or it's onto Kenny Bunkport, or do they go out and eat and shop and do those good things, go to the movies? I asked for strengths and weaknesses in the business survey, and some of them we've heard before. Strengths were lots of hotels, good food and drink, the trails, all of our 35 miles of trails, Old Sturbridge Village and the Brimfield Antique Shows, a central geographic location, Old Sturbridge Village and Public House, and that the Mill Yard deserves to be promoted more than we are now, because it has so many businesses inside. And that we have talked to the owner on multiple occasions, as Robin knows, about our sign grant program, about how, ways that we can help him. We've spoken very closely with the owner of Paint and Sip, so we are going to create a special section in our guide about the Mill Yard. I'm sure you've seen it, again, our new guide, which just came out.
Thank you.
We're happy with the guide because it has a first-ever tourism map, and it also has an index of all the businesses in the town in reverse order, so you can look up shopping, food, inns, hotels, to give you an idea of accessing what the town has to offer. We don't have any ads in it, which makes it a cleaner, easier document to read, and we're gonna print another edition and include more about what other promotions we have, such as the Mill Yard. Weaknesses in the survey were, there's not much to do except for Old Sturbridge Village and our trails, walkability, lack of specialty shops, the, or that RV visitors struggle with the I-98, I-84 bottlenecks, low evening options, no central downtown, and the condition of the Host Hotel is being mediocre. Consumer spending. Meal spending, pre-COVID, was about $63 million a year. It fell to 46 million, and then since then, it's rocketed back up to 65 million in '21, 74 million in '22, 77 million in '23, and I think that it will come in at 80 million for 2024, and of course, some of that is the higher price of food. So I don't want to just point to a higher number and say, "Oh, you know what that means? It's more," I mean, the higher price of food's obviously a part. If you look at the percentages, 2021, meal sales came back from COVID, so it went up 41%. 2022, it went up 13%. '23, it went up 5%, and for 2024, I think it'll go up for 3%. So you can see the percentages are ebbing as well. Hotel occupancy. Hotel revenue also took a big hit in 2020. It fell 50%, but then in 2021, it came back 64% from 8 million to 14 million, and then it went up another 33% in 2022 to almost 20, $19 million, and then it went up 11% in 2023. And now, we haven't finished '24, so as I said, I don't have the hotel numbers till the end of December, and I won't have them till the end of January, but I predict that hotel revenue for calendar year '24 will be at 22 million, which is only a million more than last year. And on the next slide, I went to look at room demand on the Star reports, and what I see is that in 19, in 2021, you had 162,000 hotel room nights rented. 2022, it went up to 186,000. 2023, it went to 200,000, and then 2024, it went up to 206,000. So to me, it's almost hit a high-water mark, and then it's sort of plateauing. And I'm saying that's bad, but it's just to say that, as I've let Barbara Berry know, that's gonna drive whether Betterment will have more money or less money, because it's based on the hotel tax. The good news is it's not going down, and it's just gonna go up a little, and we'll see, you know, what goes forward with that. There are two, the two major properties that have sold are the La Quinta Inn sold at the end of 2023 for 3.8 million. It was purchased for 1 million in 2015, and then, as we know, the Host is the last major property that was sold for $4 million in January of 2020, right before COVID arrived. It was purchased in September of 2005 for 15 million, so it's quite a, this thing's raw. It's always very interesting to note that there are a total of 125 businesses in and adjacent to Sturbridge, and I always love to rattle this off. Four bakery and dessert makers, four coffee tea establishments, 32 restaurants, eateries, and markets, three orchards, three wineries, six brew pubs, three wedding venues, 11 hotel motels, four RV parks, and 31 specialty shops, and 25 health, wellness spas and fitness. Business by category, that points out that food and beverage is 42%, retail is 25%, but health and wellness is 20% of all businesses here, which I think is also interesting. Sturbridge employment figures, to follow up on the number of businesses, I've extracted some numbers from our 2021 economic assessment, and would just quickly point out that of the 397 business establishments within the town, 61 are leisure and hospitality, and 47 are retail for a total of 108, so that's a third. Manufacturing, there are 15, health and social service, 66. The number of employees, according to the report, is there 5,000, 5,300 employees within the town. 1,500 of them are on leisure, and 620 are in retail, so that's 2,137, which is almost half. So almost half of the people that work in the town during this day are in leisure, hospitality, or retail. Manufacturing is almost 500, health and social services is 500, and education is 600. This is a common statistic, too, I'll just run through this very quickly. Half of businesses in the town only have one to four employees, 20% have five to nine, 12% have 10 to 19, 11 have 20 to 49 employees, and the bigger it gets, the percentages go down. Only 3% are 50 to 90, 9, and then 100 to 249 is 3%. So the number of small businesses in the town is significant half. Visitorship and attendance, I've listed that. We estimate, I think these are conservative numbers, almost 540,000 people in the, in yearly will come to the town. I have two panels on the Business of the Year Award Program. After the COVID pause, the awards were resumed in 2022 and 2023. 2022, the winners were Whoopie Doo Cupcakes, Bird Store &amp; More, Public House, and Old Sturbridge Village. In '23, the winners were Teddy G's, Tooty Quanti, the Sturbridge RV Park, and Old Sturbridge Village. The program has tremendous value, because it not only offers publicity to all local businesses, but it generates hundreds of votes and resident participation, and the winning businesses really value and treasure the award. They get a $1,200 grant, they get a very nice plaque, and if you go to any of their shops, you can see that they post the plaque prominently in their entry areas, so that's a positive. The winners this year were Deep Roots Distillery for Best Place to Eat, the Best Place to Have Fun was the same exact place, the Green Axe Throwing Company, so you could kill two birds with one stone. Best for shopping was Tooty Quanti, and the Best Place to Stay was Comfort Inn. New and completed and emerging projects, as I mentioned, you have the new tour guide with our map inside, we finished that. The Sturbridge Visitor Center opened not this summer, but the spring before, so they're now, almost open now a year and a half, and that's been very successful. And the Tourism Association helped pay for part of the outfitting of the building to become the Visitor Center Park. That's the part that we paid for. The 501 Main Street Project, which hopefully will connect Route 20 and our retail corridor to the trails, has taken another major step with the opening of the parking lot, and hopefully will continue to work on the goal to connect across the river to the Riverlands Trail. Sign Grant Program, as I mentioned, we've had seven award winners, and we reimburse 50% of the cost of a sign up to $2,500. One of our next projects is to create a tourism rack card, which we can then distribute in different parts of the state or into Connecticut, and we're gonna talk with the Tourism Board about that next week, when, or, excuse me, Wednesday night when we meet. And then, I think really great news is the reemergence of a theater at Hobbs Brook, and that that will be a real positive for people to do things at night. It's definitely gonna be an asset for visitors who are here, who come for exhibits and shows. They're gonna have a theater to go to, so I think that's good news. And I want to give you. We promote the town digitally on Facebook and Instagram, and through our new tourism website. These are real specific details on exactly what those platforms are doing. Instagram pages and the website. We work very well with Break the Ice Media, who are located in Canandaigua, and I've been very happy with the work that they've done. So that's the update as we stand. Sorry if I didn't go too long.
Oh, you did great, Terry. Questions from the board?
Can you tell me a little more about who organized the Christmas stroll? Because I had several residents inquire, and some businesses participate. Is that something you organized? Is that a chamber event? How did the businesses decide to join this Christmas stroll?
We were approached by Mallory Stanton from Vintage &amp; Vine and from Painted Stone. They have asked us to help give them an STA grant for the lawn signs and other promotional costs, and beyond that, it has been their program.
So the STA, the STA funded it, is what you're saying?
We gave, they're gonna submit, we gave them some money last year, like $500, and then this year, they're gonna, we're gonna give them another 500 for, as I said, lawn signs and Facebook promotions.
It's a privately generated.
Okay, I wasn't sure, because the way it was listed in here, it says, you know, Sturbridge, Mass. In the other entries, you know, it has St. Patty's Day is Rapsgalian Brewery, textile and trade is OSV, and so when I got to that, I was like, "Oh, that's interesting." Did we fund?
There was some confusion as to whether or not, and it all came up with that whole discussion of snow, that this was a, quote, "town event," and it is not. We helped with some financial assistance, but it is not a town-coordinated event.
Okay, and this also makes it appear like it is?
It does appear that way, yes.
So I'm just alerting, and I, and it would be nice to have updates, because I really didn't know what to say about it. I just saw the signs all over 20 and 131, and some people asked, and I said, "I don't know if it was, you know, a chamber event, or who decided to participate." Did they offer discounts when you stopped in during this, what was it, the fourth through the eighth, or?
It's a scavenger hunt, so you're encouraged to go to shops and see if you can find what I think is, it's almost like Where's Waldo? So you have to find Santa, and then if you're able to identify him, then there's some benefit to that. But the idea is that by going along with the scavenger hunt, you're gonna end up going to many stores and hopefully shop.
Okay, and what did the STA contribute in terms of the amount of money towards that?
The amount I hadn't mentioned, $500.
Oh, five, oh, sorry, I missed that part. Okay.
Anything else?
All right, Terry, thank you so much there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to Town Administrator Update.
So on December 11th, Heather Lauren and I met with representatives from DOT to discuss engineering designs for Street or Beach. Keith from the Army Corps also joined. DOT did indicate it's willing to work with us on some preferred options. We reached out to the abutter most directly involved. He has indicated a willingness to comply with those restrictions that DOT would want in order for us to put a parallel entrance at the top, and then diagonally cut across to the main road down, so that there's no concern about truck traffic for the manufacturing company and us. And so we meet again next Tuesday, Wednesday, out there with that property owner, that abutter, and so we are moving forward. I don't know that it would be for this summer, but we would at least be moving toward, I would think if all goes well, at minimum, next summer. This summer might be a bit ambitious, but I don't want to promise anything I can't keep, because lawyers get involved, and sometimes that slows things down a bit.
What do you think about lawyers? They move fast when you tell them.
Yeah.
I may know that.
Conservation, of course, I want to thank Lauren, she hosts these quarterly, and this is a great meeting between the Lake Committees, Opakum joined this one, representatives from Conservation and Open Space are there. We have some very good discussions about land, conservation land, projects that might be on the table for open space, just a general informal discussion with like a representative from those groups, myself, Lauren, and whoever an invited guest might be. Very productive. MMHR, December 5th, I did a half-day virtual meeting with MMHR, focused on personnel challenges and proper onboarding for employees, what to expect when you come into a new job, and what our cultural atmosphere is like before people take a job, so that they're prepared and know that it's a good fit for them. On that same day, I then headed to Uxbridge for an opioid task force meeting. The reason I'm sitting in on some of these Uxbridge ones, they have Blackstone Valley, they're doing a regional Blackstone Valley. If you regionalize with this, you can get up to, I believe, 250,000 in matching funds for opioid work out of top of the money that we're using. You don't have to contribute all of your opioid funding, but if you contribute a portion, and you get other towns to contribute a portion, you can also do some regional programming. So the Uxbridge Police Chief has been a great leader on this, and I'm sort of sticking my nose into their meetings to, why reinvent the wheel, if I can copy somebody else's good work. Walker Pond, we had a very successful meeting with, I think, over 36 residents, I saw, something like that. In attendance, Representative Smolow is here. We shared options for a water line to go in there if DOT were to consider funding a water line. Either way, people who have wells that are contaminated and are in the program will be remediated, but the more that need remediation, the more likely they are to do it with one water line, as opposed to just digging deeper wells for a couple of houses. So the financial benefit for them has to be enough houses are contaminated to warrant the one solution, if you will.
How many houses are actually contaminated right now?
Four right now that we know of?
So that's a little bit of a tricky question. There are four. And that was over.
What's the depth of the wells approximately?
I don't, they're.
It's a depot?
Over, well, shallow wells usually. They're, they're.
Yeah, so they're all more than.
Five to 200 feet.
So what, our biggest message out of all of this was, please get your water tested if you are in that area, to determine if you are in the program. The more people in the program that actually need remediation, the more likely the water line to go there. Then people who are not contaminated would then have an option of tying in through Betterments. The contaminated people would be potentially fully funded, but.
I think you've got a slow way there, way, way down. You are talking about a scale of a project that is not going to, like, one thing at a time, where you're jumping to tying in the water lines and cutting through across the other side. You're talking about tens of millions of dollars.
No.
Yes. I understand what aggregate spending on water works, gang. You, this is a large, large, large spending.
The pike's in the way.
Yeah.
That's what this is about.
And we'll share with you guys.
Yeah, so let's go, before we start going to solutions, let's go to what the problem is, is all I'm saying, because without the detail.
And who's got it?
Yeah, and when that, the state's gonna magically tie in, like, there, I have a lot of questions. So I don't mean it to be fresh or flipped by any stretch of it, but this is, the devil is in the details, and expenditures at these levels, we need way more information before we start going in any direction, if that makes any sense.
December 6th, Michelle and I sat for ANAN.
That's a question about it. So this is coming from the salt contamination, it's coming from the highways, I assume?
Correct.
Correct. So what is the health risk of the salt contamination? Like, what, you know, I guess is what I'm saying, and what are these, what are these four residents doing right now? I just.
So the residents that are in the program are probably receiving some treated water, they're going through potential reverse osmosis treatments, and they're looking for a long-term solution. So what, the, the health risks of having, it's just the same as your, a high-salt diet, right? If you're getting that much more sodium and chlorides in your drinking water, it, it, you know, heart risk, it's all of those things, like if you had a high-salt diet, because you're getting the salt in your water all the time.
Like the common sense answer. Are they not, so they're drinking all bottled water, I assume, at this point?
So they're either drinking bottled water, or they have treated water, but this is, this is a neighborhood problem. They have other contamination problems in that area with other heavy metals, which are naturally incurring, so there's multiple issues that are going on there.
Let's, let's, I don't want to open this up right now.
I just wanted that question answered.
Thank you, Heather. But the, the, okay, let's move on to the MHA.
We will share you the presentation, because I think it's worthwhile.
Yeah. Okay. I just wasn't at all familiar with salt contamination in water, so.
That's why the Romans did that, the Carthage, right? All right, moving on, MHA Annual Update, Robin.
Yep, so Michelle and I met with Maya to review annual casualty insurance. We will keep you all apprised on the rate. We're pleased with Maya, but again, I'm always looking at other options, and competition drives down price.
Makes sense.
Holiday decoration, I want to thank Joe Kohn, local resident who worked with us to get some landscaping done around the tree with some of the beautification money that came through ARPA, with the support of ARPA and this board. I know Selectwoman Dowling and Selectman Kobinski have been really big on this beautification money. In the meantime, Mr. Kohn is also providing services to us, and it looks like we'll be under contract for at least another 20,000 or 25,000 of beautification up, probably most likely up the 131 area, we're gonna have less issues with DOT, maybe in front of the DPW driveway entrance, doing some beautification there, and some further beautification up 131 if we can. So hopefully, we'll have some under contract before our ARPA restrictions. It looks like we should have a good bit of it contracted.
Are you looking into, like, a solar light at night?
We will also look at some light on that sign, yes. That will not be a DOT problem. And I just want to take a moment, as you know, Michelle applied. And I just want to take a moment, as you know, Michelle applied for and was offered the position of permit technician. Bill has stolen her. And I, I, we posted the position. I want you to know, we received about 30 resumes. Oh, for my, for my position, we received, first of all, I want to stop and thank Michelle. She's been, she's been a phenomenal asset, and when she first told me she was thinking about applying for it, I kind of wanted to make her life miserable, and I wanted to tell Bill that you probably don't want her. But I, I've always sort of had a philosophy, if people feel it's in their best career growth and personal growth and it's best for them, that you support people that are good employees and doing those types of things and moving forward. I'm just happy she's staying with the organization. That's a positive for, for us. Either way, it benefits me to have her somewhere in this organization. I prefer her there, but that being said, we posted the position. We've already received, I believe, about 35 resumes.
Okay.
Lynn, I've asked Lynn Girada-Barber Barry to assist me in this search as they work most closely probably with this office hand in hand. We are starting interviews on Wednesday. Michelle officially moves to inspections the 16th, but she is required to dual produce for the next couple of weeks until I get somebody in and moderately trained. And again, I'd like to personally thank Michelle for her tremendous work. You know, when you come in new as a town administrator, you rely on that person that's sitting at that desk to bring you up to speed, to kind of tell you where the minefields are, to have you back a little bit when you're new and you don't know the lay of the land at all. And I want to personally thank Michelle, not to mention taking on a load of work that got thrown on her.
Thank you.
So that is it for me.
All right, great. Thanks, Robin. All right, we are moving on to action items. Consideration and possible action on an application for a live entertainment license for Alice Ranka, Alice's Fitness and. What's up? I missed someone?
Under Town Administrator.
Oh, yes.
Discussion.
Oh, it's a good point. Thank you.
So we have, yeah, so we have a situation where the, a project up on Main Street has been asked to have some reconsideration, reconsideration on the plan. There was a hearing involved to whether these were substantive changes or not. It involves the 40B project up the road, which makes it a little bit more complicated because we have 40B requirements and whatnot. On January 8th, Jean was notified by the people involved in this project, like, two days before a deadline. She had to get a meeting together very quickly. ZBA is asking for this to now move forward. They will have another hearing on January 8th, and at some point, the board may need to weigh in. The whole board does not need to be there on January 8th, but I think it would be wise for the board to have someone, if not the whole board, and if you all want to vote to send a person to be the representative as this project moves forward because it may become somewhat complicated on what will be approved by the town, what the ability is for the state to weigh in on this, and a whole host of other questions that could get pretty intricate. So if the board would like to send a representative, or if you all want to go on the 8th as a body, but if you go on an 8th, it's a published meeting, or you could send a representative to bring the information back to the board.
What time is the meeting?
I believe seven. ZBA meets at seven, I think, or 7:30? Do you have that in your notes?
Well, the first question is, who thinks they want to go? I'll probably not go.
I was gonna follow to Jamie if you want.
No, it's, it's, yeah, because otherwise, I mean, I won't stay. I'm the select for.
Yeah, I mean, happy, I, I will probably go, but I don't want to commit.
Yeah.
And I mean, can we tell you when it's closer to the 8th? If you, if all of us end up going, you can post it as a meeting, but I probably.
Right?
If re-ata five, that's right. I'll probably, 80% going.
Yeah, and only if, if you engage at 6:30. Yeah, and only if you engage in discussion. You can go if you, yeah, and what typically we will post is somewhere, we would post the select board, members of the select board shall be in, may be in attendance. So people know you're there, but it doesn't have to get called as a meeting. So if I know it's more than.
And we have a meeting before then, right?
Yeah, we have a meeting before that. So if I know that it's more than two of you, I'll just have them put on the notice that you, there may be select minutes.
Yeah, let's keep it on for the, so that, are, do we have a meeting on the?
Six.
Six? Okay, so it wouldn't be enough to.
But at minimum, I definitely think a, a member of the board should be in attendance at minimum.
I'd just say members of the select board will be there and then definitely end up being.
Okay. Great, thank you.
We'll just go make Mary Lou stand outside.
Hey!
All right. But the, all right, now, Alice.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. So Alice Ranka, Alice's Fitness and Dance located 179 Main Street. So live entertainment, it's fine.
Um, so I have been talking for a bit with my partner about potentially doing a karaoke night at the studio, having it be open studio time so anybody can come and dance, but then also having karaoke. I know there's a fair amount of people in town who really enjoy it, me being one of them, and the places that have hosted it over the years have kind of fallen off and it's hard to find it nowadays. So I was like, heck, I'm a dance studio, we'll host it, whatever, you know? I know people who can do that. So, um, so in addition to our burlesque shows, which, yeah, when I, when I brought up the karaoke nights and Michelle was like, oh, you, you're gonna need a live entertainment, I was like, we do live entertainment, like, we do burlesque shows! So, um, so I probably should have had this before, so now it's good that we're getting it to cover everything. But yeah, so we would also like to do the liquor licenses so that we can have kind of the, you know, bar atmosphere with the karaoke. It helps people feel more comfortable.
All right. And so you have, so for the live application?
Yes.
I'm gonna read the dates.
It's every other Thursday.
Well, yeah, that doesn't.
Doesn't help.
All right, so we have karaoke, a live entertainment license for karaoke and the one-day liquor license, is that corresponding?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so these dates will be the same for the live entertainment license and for action item B, the, what's up?
The live entertainment she just has for the year.
Right.
Oh, I see, the liquor license is the one I'm reading off, then, okay, that's helpful. All right, so do we have a motion on action item A for a live entertainment license?
A, I make a motion that we approve the live entertainment license as applied by, for, from Alice Ranka for 179 Main Street, Alice's Fitness and Dance.
Wait a second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor? All right, great. So then we have, I'm going to, I'm just gonna make a motion, make a motion to, to approve one-day liquor licenses, a one-day liquor license applications for Alice Ranka, Alice's Fitness Dance for Karaoke Nights and Burlesque Dance Shows at 179 Main Street in Sturbridge for the following dates. January, and all in 2025. January 9th, January 23rd, February 6th, February 20th, March 6th, March 20th, April 3rd, April 17th, May 1st, May 15th, May 29th, June 12th, June 26th, July 10th, July 24th, August 7th, August 21st, September 4th, September 18th, October 2nd, October 16th, October 30th, and April last show on October 18th, 2025. Oh, there are other dates. And 11/13, 12/4, and 12/18.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Great.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, Alice.
Thank you.
All right. All right, now we are on to consideration and possible action on the appeal for water and sewer connection fees from the property located 698 Main Street Sturbridge by Jeremy Procon Interstate Towing Incorporated. All right. Heather, what's up?
So I don't think Jeremy could be here tonight. I think we just found that. I do believe in your package. It was the calculations that I said that I would go back and do. I had have conversation, I did have a conversation with him and said that I was present, going to present it back to you and that it would be up for you guys to determine. I did, as you will see, the original option, how it, we came up with it was, is the base. Then I removed the minimum amounts from the calculation and that did, came up with a three EDU. We started at four was the original, what his engineer had come up with. We went down to three EDU. I did the same thing. I assumed it all to be office, which is basically just a different way of looking at the calculations. It came up with three again. I changed it to be office and then storage bays slash retail, as like a retail space that came down to a two EDU. And then I used the minimum, use office space plus a warehouse cold storage with six employees, which is what his application to the, the planning board was, and that also was two EDUs. So I think from the standpoint of the board, you could do two EDUs and have backup of the calculation, knowing that his, isn't the traditional shop as he spoke about where he's repairing cars, because that is not the service he's providing. Yes, he has garage bays, but they are not doing a repair shop, which was what the original calculation was based off of. It's more of a storage area for the truck to be stored inside. Or if they have to, if there's a serious accident, they have to actually store the cars that they salvage inside until that police investigation is done, as he explained. So it's more of secure storage than it is repair garage.
Okay, so what's, just so I'm, yeah, we'll step back for a second. The last one was, was it $10,000? Was that the ti, was that the part that we were talking about?
Yeah, you're talking about the EDU charge. It's $7,500 per EDU.
Okay, and so we had them at, how many?
We had them at four.
So four EDUs, so that was where, that was roughly, just shot, just above $30,000.
Correct.
So, um, and the, these are yours saying from going from four to the top, which is what we did last time, and then you go down one per, okay.
Yep. Any one of these options is defendable. I would say that from an engineering standpoint. His business doesn't fit in this additional Title V options, right? So I had to look and say, well, if you chose this, this is, they're all defendable. I'm not going to say that they're not. So it really becomes what you're comfortable with in how you're looking at.
My only thought on it, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, is that I think that part of it is, and, and I'm not saying we should keep him at where he was, at four, but the, part of it is what the facility is used for, part of it is what the facility can be used for. And it can be probably used more broadly than it is, right? And that's sort of the balance in my, I'm not, and I don't have a strong opinion either way, but from understanding the facility, it could theoretically be used as a full-tilt automotive facility, right?
You, you could probably retrofit it to be that, yes. You could put garage lifts in there and do something to change it that way, yes.
Okay, so that, that was.
Wouldn't you have to come back to planning?
So you'd have to come back from planning, our regulations? If it's a change in use and we could demonstrate what the original calculations were for, yes, and which we have done. So even if there was an existing building there and they retrofitted it and changed the use and we had a different calculation, you know, you, original was a single-family house and now it's going to be multifamily or a restaurant, you change the EDUs and you do the calculation. So you could also come back at a sec, at a different time if it changed use.
Okay, so that, at that juncture, there would the, there would have to be an additional tie-in even if it wasn't actually a tie-in?
Correct.
Okay. So the, the meter, basically, it would be metered.
It wouldn't be the meter fee, it would be the charge for the EDU for the, for the betterments.
That's helpful. Thank you. Thank you. All right, anybody else have thoughts?
Chime in, since the hour is late. I'm comfortable, especially when you indicated that the charge can change if they change the use. To me, that is the critical part of all of this, because if they didn't, then, you know, we're approving something lower and then they go back and change it. But from the way that business was described, I'm, I would personally be comfortable reducing or viewing it as two EDUs based upon minimum office space and storage, because that is what they're really doing with those trucks, is storing them. And so I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I, I know we have our choice between leaving it as it is at four or abating to three or two. And I think two is fair.
Sorry, Mary.
That's all I'm done.
No, I'm comfortable with the two EDUs based on the use, also based on the fact that this project has had a difficult time. I mean, the amount of money they spent on the original site and then come to find out that got mixed. So I'm comfortable.
Yeah, Mary Lou, Chase.
I'm comfortable with the, the two also, for the same reasons.
Chase, anything?
Yeah, I'm comfortable.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Okay. Oh, Mary's.
No, go ahead, you do it. No, I'm fine.
Are we even granted, wait, let's ask.
We're granting an abatement because they paid.
Is this an abatement technically right now or has it been reset? Okay. So we are granting an abatement to.
Interstate Towing.
Interstate Towing, towing to reduce from four ED to two EDU, is that what you need?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, I guess I just made a mistake.
A second.
I didn't, I just walked into that one. All right.
Well said.
Thank you.
And then, yes, one more?
Yep, I have one more.
So consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to sign the notice of award and contract documents for the sewer rehabilitation project with InstaForm Technologies LLC in the amount of 389426.
So this is for our water, I mean, our sewer line relining in Route 20. You know, last year at this, was it last year? I can't even remember. Very close to last year, the year, last year at this time, we had an issue where we found that the pipe was compromised under Route 20. More further inspections of other lines show that there are, there were also some indications of cracking and issues in those pipes, and we don't want to have to dig them up. So lining them provides structural stability, also provides so that we can't, don't have infiltration, so it extends that life of those sewer lines much longer. It's kind of a traditional way of being able to do that. So we went out to bid, the design bid and everything, and this is the final, so that we'll be ready to go in the spring. We actually might see some of this work start happening in the winter. We had some alternates to do some of those lines just off of 20, which we'll be able to work in over the winter too, so.
Okay, great. Do we have any questions?
So.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we award the sewer rehabilitation project to InstaForm Technologies LLC in the amount of $389,426. The project was funded in the fiscal year 24, Article 41, for up to $750,000.
Great, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Great. Okay?
Mr. Chair, do you mind if?
I was gonna take it out of order already.
All right, okay.
It's given, action item G. Thanks, Heather.
Thanks, Heather. You are, you're good.
Chair, if I might just.
Huh?
May I be recognized for a second?
Sure, sure, sure.
I just want to thank you, Heather, for the, that abatement, coming up with all of the different figures and when really could have been the initial engineer's position
and when really could have been the initial engineer's position to accurately describe what their business was. So anyways, you did it quickly and I know you have other things to do besides that, but.
No, we appreciate it.
And it's fair.
All right.
It's fair.
Thanks, Heather. All right, action item G, consideration and possible action on increasing the building department's annual inspection fee from 40 to $200.
I think we should have made it wait all night.
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry. I didn't, I, that's my fault.
He's the newer guy, like, not new anymore, but newer.
No, we don't.
Michelle would have put me at the top of the list.
You would have thought she would have been kissing up a little bit now.
All right, so quickly, because I, I know you've been here longer than you should.
Oh, that's okay.
That's the, so what, why 40 to 200?
So presently, the fee is $40. I checked with surrounding towns. Most of the surrounding towns are charging $200 with a $100 reinspection fee. So presently at $40, that doesn't even cover me going out.
Yeah.
Doesn't cover all the clerical work behind it. Seven out of 10 times, I'd say, I'm going back twice, sometimes three times, whether they fail for, you know, particular items or people not showing up. So I just, I mean, at roughly 100 licenses per year.
Yeah.
That's like $16,000 in revenue that's being lost. And if, if you do the math, if I'm going back two or three times, you know, with the two or three times is more clerical work with emailing and, you know, are you guys ready? Phone calls, you know, it just adds up. So I, I mean, the town's probably losing $20,000 if I had to guess.
Losing money.
If not more. So I was getting, you know, a little blown away that the fee was only $40.
What towns did you look at?
Well, these.
It's in the packet.
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
I looked at the city of Worcester. I looked at Southbridge. I looked at Webster.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it sounds fair to me. I just, I have a little bit of a problem with how drastic an increase it is. I'm sorry, I don't have my packet tonight. Wasn't able to get it.
And we, and we've been vocal on not keeping up on it so that it, it.
Yeah.
It's just a, it's just a really steep increase. It's like.
I, I, I get it, but I don't think, I don't think $200 annually is a, is a big impact on any of the businesses.
Yeah, if it was, residential is one thing, but it's, it's not.
If, if it's costing the town, and I'm just throwing a rough number out there, if it's costing the town $20,000 a year, you know, that doesn't even count, you know, the fire department going out and, you know, they do inspections and they have clerical work behind it also.
I think it makes perfect sense.
I didn't take it into consideration. It's just a proposal. I mean.
No, it's, it's a logical one to me. I don't, I mean, Mary, you have any thoughts or concerns on it?
Yeah, I'm told that fee's been in place for over 10 years from what I was told.
Well, that's it. I mean, we've lagged so naturally when you try to catch up. It's a jump.
But still, I don't think $200 for a business per year is, is any big issue.
No, I don't.
Are we, and, do we have late payments, like the city of Worcester and missed appointment fee? We're not going that route?
No, I mean, I would suggest the missed appointment fee because some businesses, it's, it's tough to get the churches online to, to show up and meet you. It takes sometimes two or three attempts.
I think we start with the fee for now and then just kind of go from there.
Yeah.
And we can, as you build it up, we don't have to do everything all at once, but we just want to clean it up as a cost.
I, I'll go with the board. I might have been inclined to go to the 150 just because, and then in a year, 200. Because again, it, it's our fault that we haven't kept up with it. Like, that's poor management on our part when we have to go from 40 to 200. You know what I mean?
Yeah, it's a big jump. I get it.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
On the, on the flip side, I don't think it should be costing the town.
Right.
And honestly, if it's, if that's noticeable, you've got other issues that aren't this, that are in that business. Not to be fresh, but I, it is just true. All right, well, do we have a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to increase the building department's annual inspe, inspection fee from $40 to $200 yearly.
All right, all those in favor? Again, sorry, I didn't get you up sooner.
Oh, that's fine.
Thanks, Bill.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Can you guys get Michelle to decorate my door a little?
We're giving her, we're giving her a direct. As a board of selectmen to decorate that door. Uh, no.
You too.
Doesn't really work for us.
All right, consideration, we're going back to E, consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to sign the updated consideration, uh, for regional, I'm sorry, the updated regional shared services agreement that our friends in Charleston.
I have no idea about this. It came in on Friday to Michelle without a memo from Health. But apparently it's just an update of some agreement we already have. I know nothing about it.
Oh, so we're just authorize, let's, does it, yeah, let's get the agreement and then.
Yeah.
I'm uncomfortable suggesting you to sign it because I have no memo.
I don't want to vote on it.
I have no memo. I have nothing.
Yeah, so that's fine. This is a strike action.
Yeah, I normally ask what's changed.
Okay. So consideration and going to have consideration and possible action to authorize the town administrator enter into a contract for electrical upgrades to the town common.
So I, I'm going to ask for indulgence, sort of preemptively, on a couple of things. We have to have all ARPA money contracted by December 31st. So on this particular one, the bids are not going to be open till December 20th for the commons upgrade. So I don't know exactly what the number will be and I won't have a contract before December 20th. So you won't meet again before there's a contract to sign. So we do have a couple of interested bidders in it. We're working with PAR Corporation who did our bid documents. We are opening bids on the 20th. We're confident we will have a few bids. We are funded up to $250,000 to include PAR's money and the actual work on the project. There may even be more ARPA money left if we were to go over. There might be some more ARPA money left, which is another discussion on the next item. But what I need from you is the authority to enter into the contract, because you will not meet prior to the time that I will need to sign that contract or you would need to sign that contract. So the money, the funding's there through ARPA. The project has been discussed. Now it's literally getting the bids from the electricians.
Questions, concerns from the board? No, it makes sense to me.
I appreciate that. Or we'd have to have a Zoom meeting on like December 30th for you guys or December 31st.
Have to. That's an interesting framing.
Well, or, or, well, we would have to. I would be strongly urging or we would lose 250,000 of ARPA funds.
I know.
You can explain that, haven't you?
All right, so, and then we are moving to.
So each year.
So consideration and possible action on the approval of ARPA expenditures.
We were supposed to have an ARPA meeting at 5 o'clock today for me to be able to report back to you contingency plans for any leftover ARPA money, once we reconcile all of these ARPA things. That meeting did not happen because of a posting issue. As such, we will have, we're gonna have a meeting before December 31st, particularly once we know what the common money will be too. And what I need, because typically you have to vote to support ARPA expenditures, is whatever that contingency money is, and it may range from 10,000 to 60,000 or 70,000. I don't think it will be much more than that, but we don't want to waste it or lose it. Is, would the board consider preapproving whatever ARPA votes to do with the remainder of the money that can be done before December 31st? I will tell you, if it's going to be used before December 31st, it's not going to be a large-scale contracted item. It's going to be literally things we can buy or are already under contract. So if the electrical upgrades went a little over to do something more or had a change order, we could fund it from that if I'm already under contract. We have, one of the areas we might use is we've been doing a lot of the, the filing, the data filing, we're putting everything over to digital and converting. We're under contract with them. There's still another whole phase of that could be done, putting plans on electronically, cleaning up our offices. We are under contract for that. We could expend money on that. I'm looking, I'm still working to get the electronic button pushed for the automatic door downstairs. I might be able to get that for $8,000. And so, but what I need from you is we're not going to meet if ARPA, I can't do it without ARPA voting it, but ARPA would vote on all of these things as contingency funds that I could get spent by the 31st, but you're not going to meet to approve that.
When is the ARPA meeting?
Uh, we don't know. I have to reschedule. I just found out today that it didn't get posted in time. So I'll be looking to repost, even if it's a virtual, with ARPA in the next few days, hopefully, before the end of this week, if not the first of next week, but then we hit Christmas.
New Year's.
And, and by New Year, and New Year's Eve is when I have to have everything spent.
So. Is ARPA going to give approval contingent and we're going to give approval contingent on ARPA's approval?
You're giving the approval contingent on ARPA's vote, whereas usually ARPA contingent is contingent on yours?
Yeah.
This, in this case, you're giving preemptive approval, if you will, for the remainder of the funds.
I, I think. I hate to be the person who says this, but I don't like, I don't know. Just process-wise, it's not really.
No, it's not.
Not how it's supposed to operate. I don't really want to have another meeting, but if you are making sure there's no issues, that's the thing. Now, maybe if it's all tag on, so I, I don't, I'm not worried about what ARPA is gonna do.
You know what? That ARPA doesn't vote.
Is ARPA gonna include that, my library door?
That's being painted, that is being painted from our own funds.
Okay.
Yes. And if I have to, I will spend ARPA money myself, or I will get the paint myself at this point. If, if ARPA is able to meet, we need two days' notice, right? Two days posted. Yeah, and it could be a virtual meeting. So, I mean, we could still, if Jamie's not comfortable, and I understand how the board feels, we could still have, we could still sneak in another one of our meetings to approve what ARPA did. I mean, that's the other alternative. Or the other option is I could send a list out. I mean, we want to spend every last dollar of that money. That's what I want. So if I can get an ARPA meeting scheduled, let's say for Thursday of this week, I have to post it by tomorrow. If I could get a schedule for Thursday or a Zoom meeting by Friday, I could send an email to the board saying, these are the things that we have voted to do contingent. You can't discuss that, but if any one of you had a problem, you could say to me, I have an issue. And then that would trigger me to then reach out to Jamie to say, would you like to call a meeting? And we could do a virtual meeting even on that. I mean, we could do it that way, where I could send a list to you and you individually, again, we can't discuss it, but you, any one of you, if you wanted to say that if one of you has a concern about any of the projects, then, then they let me know and I let you know.
Well, I'd like to see the project.
That would give a safeguard.
Yeah, it's not the safeguard I'm worried about. I'm just making, I'm worried about it perfecting, because I'm not sure how delegable that authority is. So what I don't want to have happen is because we don't take five to 10 minutes to have a rubber stamp meeting that we have a pullback.
And that's what we could.
I'm not worried about what ARPA is gonna do.
Maybe we should just have a meeting. Okay, so let me plan on.
Because it's only gonna be three of us. If you can't make it, like, don't.
We'll just do a virtual.
When I'm around and.
Yeah, and if you want to do like one of the virtual eight o'clock or something like that, we could. If that's not delegable.
Yeah, I just don't know. And I don't.
I don't know how that got voted before I got here, how the process would work with ARPA funding. And it may have been voted that that's how it had to be. Or it may have come from ARPA, might have come from the government.
Listen, it is, it's a lot of stuffs going on with it. Let's just make sure, there's no reason not to make sure.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make sure we work with schedule, even if it's a virtual eight o'clock, come on, get on this TV. Yeah. Yeah, it's not figured. Just kidding. Yeah.
It's.
It's not for high-level discussion type stuff.
Yeah, I'm sure it'll all be fine.
Okay. Okay.
So, okay, so moving on, consideration and possible, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the donation of 30 of our Thanksgiving meals from Steve Small, proprietor of Old Village Grill with real thanks. I mean, that's just amazing.
Yeah. So cool.
Okay, and do we, so do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Great. Consideration and possible action on accepting the donation of eight turkeys, eight Shaw's gift cards in the amount of $30 each, one $25 Mastercard, uh, Mastercard gift card, and four McNucks Big Bunny gifts card, gift cards in the amount of $30 each from Don Taff on behalf of the QQLA Quaba, Quab, I can't talk anymore. Quac, Quacumusit. I know, this is, it's, I'm out of, I'm out of steam. Lake Association. Uh, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Again, thank you so much. Oh, wait, all those in favor? The guys have it. I'm falling apart. All right, moving on. Consideration and possible action on signing the following licenses to be held until all compliance requirements are met. Soup to nuts, and if you have an issue with one of these, just let me know and we'll vote the rest of them without it. Soup to nuts, Sturbridge Antique Shops, Sturbridge Country Inn, The Scottish Inn, DNR Garage, Sturbridge Service Center Incorporated, Sturbridge Automotive Collision Center, Sturbridge Mortars Incorporated, Napoli Pizzeria III, The Scottish Inn.
So these are, these are companies that are businesses that have not completed the packet. We don't anticipate issues, but we will not release the license until the packet is complete. We can't call it contingent by law. You can't say you're releasing it contingent. What you can simply say is you're voting it, but administratively, we will not release it.
Well, and these are their, I mean, sort of. I don't really know what the difference is between us approving a license and not just giving them the licenses. I think your license are your license. I don't think the paper really matters.
You're voting to approve it, but not release it. Right. We did this last year this way, because of the timing on it.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a timing issue, I'm fine with it, but.
Yeah.
That's the reason. It's, it's time. We don't anticipate, yeah.
But if you're telling me, the, the part that stuck in me was we can't have contingent licenses, so if we can't have contingent.
For some reason, there's a legal reason we can't call it contingent. This has happened in another community I was in and I don't know. It's kind of the same thing what we're doing. It sort of is.
That's more of where I'm getting at, but whatever.
Call it. This is what I've been advising us to. Yeah, you are not. You are not.
I'm fine with it, whatever. Did we make a motion?
I thought you were making it.
Oh, no, no, I didn't. I, I'll make them. I can though. I will move to, uh.
Sign the following.
Assign the listed licenses and, and with the note that they will not be released until all compliance requirements are met.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Moving on. Consideration and possible action on signing the 2025 license renewals for the following businesses. All right. Again, if you, if there's one anybody has an issue with, let me know. Highland Orchard DBA, Highland Orchard and Brewery, Cracker Barrel, Old Country Store Incorporated, DBA Cracker Barrel, Churchill's Village Eatery, Hampton Inn, 413 on Main, Village Pizza and Restaurant, Uno Restaurants LLC, DBA, Uno, uh, Chicago Grill, Sawdust Coffee Incorporated, Ocean State Job Lot, Baba Sushi Sturbridge, Altruis Brewing Company, Comfort Inn and Suites American Legion, Teddy G's Pub and Grill Incorporated, Brush It Off, Kula Restaurant, Sturbridge RV Resort, Charles River Services Incorporated, Sturbridge Auto Sales LLC, Apple Green New England Incorporated, Dunkin' Donuts, Burger King, McDonald's, Old Sturbridge Pizza, Wicked Licks, Pine Lake RV Resort and Cottages, Super 8 Motel and Carriage House Inn, and Nakana Lodge.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we sign the above-mentioned licenses.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Old Business, Mary Lou?
Nothing.
Chase?
Nothing for me.
Mary Dowling?
No.
Nope.
And I have none. New Business, Mary Lenterd?
Nope.
Mary Dowling?
No.
Chase?
Not big.
Mary Lou?
No.
And I have none. Correspondence, I don't think we have any of anything wrong. And then approval of minutes, I don't think we have any minutes. Citizens Forum, oh, we do have minutes? Citizens Forum, no, no.
That'll be her legacy.
All right, and then, so on executive session, Mary, you wanna read it in?
Yeah, sorry. Oh, did I take it? No. Yeah, there.
Should be on the front. Oh, I see what, I see what I did. It got, mine got.
There you go.
No, it's on the agenda. She's got everything. I'm just looking actually for the contract.
I'll make a motion that pursuant to Mash General Lodge, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subparagraph A2, we go, we move into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with the fire chief or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board and the chair so declares and not to reconvene in open session.
The chair so declares. Mary Lou, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary Dowling, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary Dowling?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you. Uh, and I vote yes as well.